Okay, I will call to order the Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting for July 16th, 2018, and first ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Reverend, would you come forward and give certification this morning?
May we pray. Gracious Lord, this is the day that you have made. Give us grace that we may rejoice and be glad in it. And as we call out to you and ask you for wisdom and guidance for these who will be making decisions today, and we pray for that in their deliberations and thinking, give us to understand that your ways are above our ways and your thoughts above our thoughts. That when we pray for guidance, let us not think it's strange if you work in a way that we haven't thought of. Grant that we may delight ourselves in doing your will and in carrying out the work of the people for their good and for your glory. We ask in your name. Amen.
All right, we'll turn next to the public comment session. I don't have anyone that's signed up. Would anyone like to come forward this morning to speak at public comment? I'm talking. It's not picking up as good. Okay, public comment session. Anyone like to come forward? Okay. If not, we'll move to constituent concerns. Mike?
Just had a couple, but kind of been dealing with them and so, but that's all.
Kevin?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Bill?
Just a positive comment to the Board of Education. They don't get many through the years. Outstanding selection for superintendent, and in turn, Nolte and his staff did a great job in selection of principals, probably the most I've seen since I've been here in Haywood County. Those people I know personally, they've been in the system a while, they will do a great job. So again, thank you to the Board of Education and Bill Nolte.
Okay. And I had a few constituent concerns that I talked to staff about, and they're handling those. Appreciate that. Next, administrative agency reports. We don't have any discussion, adjustment of agenda. We do have one item or a few items to adjust as far as new business goes. I would like to move items 11, 12, and 13 up to position number two, and then everything else will just slide down. Everybody okay with that? You okay with that?
Yes.
All right, next we'll move to the consent agenda. First is request approval of June 18th, 2018 regular meeting minutes and the June 27th, 2018 special meeting minutes. Does anyone have any changes or corrections to those? Okay, if not, we'll move to request approval of June 2018 refunds, releases, amendments, and discoveries. Greg West, our Assistant Tax Assessor is here with that.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Morning.
I'd like to request approval of the June 2018 refunds, releases, amendments, and discoveries.
Okay. Anyone have any questions of Greg? All right, thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
And next, we've got request approval of June 2018 tax collections update. Mike Matthews?
Good morning, Commissioners. As we closed out June, as of June 30th, 2017, or 2018, we are at 97.12%, and that is $38,255,651.05 and $0.05 with a delinquent balance of $1,975,570.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions?
I noticed the delinquents was higher.
It's about, I was looking, it's about 30,000, I think, or not quite 30,000 higher than what it was this time last year.
Last year.
It's about 20 or so, I think, actually.
Shouldn't we be doing better since we have a good economy, you think?
Um, you know, you would think. We've still been hitting delinquents just as hard as we can. We've really started hitting on the, you know, the old auto delinquents and that sort of thing. We've been hitting them hard, so.
I was wondering, have you, were you able to get the formula for me that I asked about last time?
No, I didn't get the formula. I completely slipped my mind.
Okay.
How about the, you know, I think a few meetings ago I had talked about or asked about our...
63rd.
63rd?
Yeah, 18th in the region.
Okay, and do you know how that, I mean, how is it, how are we doing as far as in relationship before as far as standing in the state?
And as before?
As, well, I mean, in the last few years, how have we moved? What is our position?
I didn't look at that. You just asked where we were, so I didn't look at where we were before.
Okay. So we're 63rd in the state in tax collections?
And that was from last year.
Okay.
I was doing a little bit of research. We were 51st in 2014, 2015. We were 51.
That's awesome.
And then in 15, 16, we dropped to 62. And then this year, we've dropped to 64, or 63. I've got, I had 64. So 63 counties do a better job of collecting than we do.
Well, 63 counties doing a better job of a lot of things, not necessarily just collecting.
Yeah.
Could be, you know, income could be the, you know, their housing value, what they bring in, and jobs. It's a lot more than that, just collecting.
Bunkin County's number one. Transylvania County's number four. Henderson County's 27. Macon County's 40. Even Jackson County's 56. So that's some of the counties that have joined us. Just, you might want to make note of that.
All right, any other questions? Mike? All right, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Next is request approval of budget amendments. We've got Julie Davis. And Julie, I'll let you present each one of these.
Okay, good morning. The first one I have is rather large. It's $454,491. And this is actually some capital outlay for vehicles that we had appropriated in the last fiscal year. And for various reasons, the vehicles were not delivered by June 30th. For example, in the EMS, the ambulance actually was ordered back about August or September of last year, and it takes sometimes a year to get those vehicles. The detention van is being custom-made, and it wasn't ready. And if we were to cancel that order, we would have had to go to the back of the line again. And then some of these others were actually Ford vehicles, and from what I understand, there was a fire at one of the Ford factories. There's multiple reasons why we're having to do this, because we don't typically do this kind of a budget amendment. But since we have all these vehicles that we had ordered and they hadn't come in, we decided to move them into this budget if you approve. And we are using the appropriation of fund balance for most of this because fund balance would theoretically have gone up since we didn't pay for these vehicles last year. However, I did find revenue source, the EMS cost, Medicaid cost allocation amount that we budgeted a little less than, looks like we might get in 2019. We had, we just received a few weeks ago the amount we're going to be receiving for 2018, and it was a little bit higher. So I felt comfortable putting an extra $100,000 in that line item for next year. So we're hitting fund balance for $354,491 to cover these vehicles if you approve for us to move them into this budget.
Okay, but what happened was the money was not spent last year, moved into...
Exactly.
...fund balance for use this year.
Exactly. You got it.
So, yeah, it was already appropriated, it was already to be spent on these particular vehicles, and they just didn't arrive in last year's budget, so it...
Exactly. In fact, you actually approved all the quotes, you approved everything in a meeting...
Yeah.
...so that they could order these vehicles through the course of the year, and they just didn't get here by June 30th. Some of them are not available yet. There are a few, I think, from the Ford factory that are either available or will be available soon.
Okay. All right, any other questions about that? Okay, Julie, go on to the next.
The next one is a $2,500 budget amendment. This is grant funds that were received close to the end of the year from the Sheriff's Office or to the Sheriff's Office for specific equipment, and they were not able to get that equipment ordered by the end of the fiscal year. So we're moving that revenue into deferred revenue into, at June 30th, and that means we'll have it available to show as a revenue source in the 2019 fiscal year. So I'm increasing the Sheriff's Office line item for these particular supplies and using that grant funding source to cover that.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions? All right, next.
The next one is Public Safety EMS. You'll remember this community paramedic program. We actually had put some county money into the budget when we were doing our budget for 2019 for the amount, it's county dollars. We did not put in the budget the amount that the hospital is going to be contributing to this program. And so what I have now is I have an increase in expense for $134,636, which is the amount the hospital has said they'll contribute to the program, so I'm showing that as a revenue source. It's a net zero cost to the county for this particular budget amendment, but it does increase the expense and the revenue by that amount.
Okay, and any questions about that?
No. We pretty well discussed that pretty thoroughly and had a presentation on it and...
We did. We had a work session, I think, and we talked about it during the budget, and I think that y'all decided it was a good program.
This was the program about the additional paramedic, that the hospital would supply monies to provide additional paramedic to go around and kind of follow up on some of the patients that have been in the hospital.
Try to cut down on the returns back, going back to the hospital once they get out.
That's the hope, that's the plan, yes. It certainly is.
And basically, it helps on the fact that we, reduces our, the fact that we have to transport the emergency patients back, and then they don't have the recidivism. So that's why they wanted to supply those monies to assist that.
I can go out there and do a check on them, make sure.
Sounds like a good program. We'll see how it works.
All right, next.
The next is, that's all the budget amendments I have, but the next thing I have is a general services administrative public building lease agreement. This is a federal government lease. The federal government USDA actually is leasing space at the Ag Center. So they have a short, one-page lease. It's actually an amendment, number three, to the leases that we've had in the past. I think we've renewed them for five years, then three years. It looks like this one is getting a little bit shorter each time. But they're going to be paying us $58,640, which amounts to $4,883.67 per month.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions about the lease?
Is revenue back to the count?
Yes, it is.
All right, no other questions. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aha.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. We have no other, we have no old business. We'll move to new business. First is Brian Matlock is here with the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council to request approval of their county plan and budget for fiscal year 2018-19. Good morning, Brian.
Good morning.
Morning.
So the budget is no different than last year. The state had talked about whoever were going to increase the funds. That did not happen, but that is scheduled to happen next year, so whoever's on the board next year, be prepared. Those funds will increase, which means the match for the county will be larger since, you know, it'll be increased funding. Also included in that budget that requires the board's approval is the board-appointed members of the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. There are five or six listed on there that the board has to vote to approve, or county commissioners have to vote to approve.
Okay, and will the approval of this budget take care of the appointment of those? You say there's, there are people, there are new members to be appointed this year, and they're listed on this?
Yeah, each year, there's certain, there's up to six board of commissioner appointees for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council.
Okay.
Most of them are the same, but there is, I think, two new names.
All right, can I, can I request a motion to approve that with the appointment of those new members? Do I need to specify each one of those members by name? Well, that's kind of what I was thinking. I just didn't want to, I didn't want to do that. Which one of the, which are the new members?
They're all listed on the very bottom.
Okay, very, I know all the, all the names are listed. Did you list the new ones on the bottom?
Yes.
Okay. The last page.
And they're, each appointment is a yearly appointment, so I'm guessing you'll probably have to reapprove for the ones who were on last year to be representatives for again this year.
Okay, so if they're all, if they are all reappointed, looks like I could just...
You want me to read them?
If you, if you want to.
Brad Reganer is the chair? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, on the bottom of the list of all the listings, there are certain appointees for each organization. Those are not the ones you have to approve. It's only the board of commissioners on the last names on the bottom of the list.
Chacone, John, John, John. It starts down at the bottom.
Yes.
And then you've got Ed Brown, Kane Teague, Elizabeth Chambers, and Patty...
Tiberry.
Tiberry.
Okay.
See it? On page three?
Twenty-three, twenty-three. Is that the new ones?
Yes.
Okay. And then everyone else has been on that board and we are reappointing?
Correct.
Because they have to, they just serve a one-year term. Okay. All right, then I will entertain a motion that we approve the following new members to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council and appoint such Ed Brown, Kane Teague, Elizabeth Chambers, and Patty Tiberry.
And Scott John, Chacone.
John Chacone.
Yeah.
And John Chacone. Those, those five. Entertain that motion.
Second.
Mike and Kevin second. Any discussion?
It's still hard for us. I started on this board since a lot of them are court-related, getting all our members to the meetings, so.
Yes.
You probably need more than you have listed to get a quorum there, so.
Actually, I was chair for the two years. That's the first time in several years we've had quorum every meeting. So we did expand it when I took over, and we aggressively pursued representatives from sheriff's departments, from the school board, or you name it, that we're not showing. And we finally, juvenile attorneys, we finally got some of them coming too. So, so yeah, this was the first time for two years straight that we had quorum every meeting.
Okay, so all in favor of approving those new, the five appointees that we just named to the Juvenile Crime Convention Prevention Council, indicate by saying aye.
Aha.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Now, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council County Plan and Budget for Fiscal Year 2018-19, which includes as well the reappointment of members that had previously been on the board.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Brian, so you say the budget is not as much, it will be more next year, so when is the, when's the plan supposed to be implemented or the switch from the, from the increase of the age to juvenile court?
Well, ideally, if the state legislature gets the budget done in time, that will begin July 1st. We are told that there will be appropriation of additional Juvenile Crime Prevention Council funds across the state to assist with the raising of the juvenile age, which begins December 1st, 2019, moving that age up to 18, so we'll start handling all the 16 or 17-year-olds as well. So that also depends on the state legislature, so there's always that possibility we won't get that money, but if not, then well...
Well, let me ask you this. If you don't get the money, is the plan still going in place? Is the increase in the age going in place anyway?
Correct, yeah. The age will still increase even if we don't get money to help add programs, so.
So who's responsible for figuring out how to plan for that if you don't have the additional money to do so?
Well, that's a good question. That's, the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council will have to start getting a little creative and finding, the programs that we have funded for so long will probably change next year. It's very highly likely that we will see different names in the funding sources for different programs, including a teen court that we will begin implementing next year.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will move to the budget, I mean, or to the agenda that we had changed and move to item number 11, which is request approval of lease agreement between Haywood County and Lifespan Incorporated for two buildings located at 34 Sims Circle in Waynesville. Those buildings formerly leased by Good Samaritan. We've got David Francis, our project administrator. Morning, David.
Good morning, Commissioners. Hope everyone is doing well today. The, we have been working with several ideas about how to position our buildings as some become vacated. You know, we've talked about Annex Two. These two buildings that we're going to discuss now are the two buildings behind Annex, the former Annex Three where Lifespan is currently held. The Wellness Center sits to the right of these buildings and is the, next to the old health department where Mountain Projects is now there. So the two bills that we're discussing is the older white building and the newer modular that was put there in 2009. Chris and I had met with the Lifespan leadership team on two different occasions, and we thought this was a good fit on the programs that they were offering. We went there to one of their open houses there, and it's a, it's a very worthwhile program for the disadvantaged and disabled citizens that they're serving. I encourage all of our citizens to stop in there because they're doing some really good work with some folks that really need a lot of help. And so this made sense to do this lease. It is a dollar a year, but be mindful, they are responsible for all the maintenance and upkeep of the two buildings. That's why we felt that it was a benefit to the county to get, you know, those two buildings, since we just inherited those this year with Good Samaritan being taken over by Blue Ridge and living over closer to the hospital. This will still, you know, eliminate us having to upkeep, pay electricity, water and sewer bills. It was just a good fit for us right now for Lifespan. The lease is for three years, and it's, you know, the proverbial dollar a year. So I recommend the approval of this lease for Lifespan.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions to David regarding the lease? Chip, you have any, anything to add to that?
I couldn't quite understand what he's saying, but that includes the old, the white, the house?
It's the older white house and the newer modular.
Modular one.
Set up as, you know, medical offices.
Good Samaritan moved in there.
Yeah, yeah. They vacated both buildings.
Right.
And they were, they terminated their lease with us effective July 1st of this year. They still have a few items to get out, and they asked for a little time to get those items out. That's why we moved, this lease doesn't begin until September 1st.
Just the, having the opportunity to not have to maintain those buildings is quite a hassle, unfortunately.
Yeah, we didn't, you know, with adding the, you know, the armory this year, you know, we added a big, huge building with us there. So this kept that, those two buildings off of us and put a good tenant in there for us.
Okay. If there's no other questions, then I will entertain a motion to approve the lease agreement between Haywood County and Lifespan for the buildings located at 34 Sims Circle.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Okay, next we'll move to request approval of two contracts with Bunel Lammens Engineering. David, if you'll just explain those two.
I want to talk about, the first contract I have is with Jonathan Creek. We're going to do 12 borings there that are going to go subsurface, go a lot deeper. And the reason that we're doing this, that we have 12 RFPs out, and have added three more RFPs, we have a total of 15 RFPs out to various companies that are looking at the Beaver Dam site, and now they're looking at the Jonathan Creek site. You know, I think Beaver Dam's one of the best spots that, you know, with the view, the access. We had a company that was looking at this spot and said, we had a hard time getting there, not because you go up the hill there, actually coming off 40. So we, that company fell out. The next company said, it's a little too small, but the folks there, partnerships over there with Asheville did a good job and got those back to Jonathan Creek. But the size of this company and the size of this building is going to take a large expanse of that property. So be mindful, I didn't want to underbuild, overbuild. I said, let's look, you know, at this, you know, with this large building over 800 feet long, in the size of the equipment in there. We met with engineers and said, you know, when we were talking about this, it was talking about, you know, putting several, maybe, you know, smaller buildings there without a lot of weight. This building has a lot of weight. And they, they were questioning too about, hey, we want to make sure that we have everything good from the base all the way to the top. And that's one of the reasons that we're going to go back and do these subsurface borings, because this company is a, would be a gold star for Haywood County to get. And so we've had a lot of interest. One of the reasons that we had to adjust the agenda today is I'm getting ready to go show the property today. Out of Friday, 5 o'clock phone call. So we've got interest here. And so that's why I recommend to go ahead and do, you know, this 12 borings, $8,000. And that way, we'll know, we'll be able to tell the potential folks that are looking at this that we've fully tested it from top to bottom at this point. We're ready to go.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions about that?
David, how deep do you think y'all need to go?
They go anywhere between, it says, target depth of 25 feet each.
With being on the Economic Development Council and associated with what's going on, I mean, there is a huge amount of activity, a huge amount of interest in Haywood County right now by some fairly substantial new entities. So, and you know, this is a request that they've had, and, and you know, it's pretty, pretty, they've requested lots and lots of information, so it's obvious that they are looking at us pretty strongly.
This RFP that we completed, on one of them was over 70 pages long.
Yeah, so, you know, I think that if in fact we're going to potentially lend somebody like this, I mean, you have to, you know, do the due diligence and, and then, you know, even if it doesn't work out, at least you know, you know what you got and what you can do and what to expect on that piece of property.
Correct.
In fact, just interrupt just a second. Apparently, there, there was an accident out front where an 18-wheeler hit two cars directly in front of the courthouse, a dark blue Explorer, North Carolina license plate ELC 8952, and a white Dodge Ram van 2500. So just, I just want to let somebody know.
It's a dark blue Explorer, and it really has shat.
I hope nobody in here owns it because that was bad news. Okay, thank you, Cliff. That's Cliff Stovall reporting that.
And...
Reporting live from Main Street, Waynesville, on the latest...
We can go get, we can go get a picture real quick if we want to just interject it in the middle there.
And then following up on, you know, what I was discussing there, you know, we still have the plans to move forward with bringing in the dirt and everything.
We do, yeah. The, you know... The, you know, there's two companies, as I said, there's two companies that are, that have really taken interest in Jonathan Creek. One of them, you know, as I said, is this company's going to have a huge building, huge presence, over 200 employees, a $65 million investment. The other one's a little bit smaller, but a very internationally known company. So, you know, they, you know, they're asking us certain questions, and I need to be able to have those certain answers back to them.
Okay. And, and the reason for the borings at this point in time is because of the size and weight of the building, the proposed building.
Yeah, it'll give us a better, you know, idea, you know, once we start packing the dirt on there, you know, if there's any issues underneath there that would prevent, you know, a company from, you know, moving to, you know, such a building, such a large building there.
Right. And then we have, we have received a great deal of interest in both of those sites recently, and I think one of the challenges of the Board of Commissioners is to make sure that when we, when we do select a company, or have a company, or negotiate with a company for those properties, it's, it's a company that fits good with Haywood County as well as provides a good opportunity for Haywood County citizens. I mean, and there's always going to be criticism as to who that was or what that was, but we just try to do the best we can with that selection. All right. Do we need to approve that separate and apart from the, I guess so. So I entertain a motion to approve the testing of subsurface soils in the contract with Bunnel Lammens for the Jonathan Creek site in the amount of $8,000.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Next, if you'll talk about the drillings for our, our famous landfill, Francis Farm landfill.
The aptly named, right, troubled child.
Named appropriately.
Yeah, named appropriately, yeah. You remember, we've been stepping through this, you know, for, you know, for 10 years now, basically. And we're finally seeing a little light at the end of the tunnel. Last year at this time, we had a public hearing in this very room concerning the assessment for corrective measures. And at that point, that, at that time, those assessment corrective measures plan went down to the state, to the Department of Environmental Quality, and that was approved by them. And so now we're coming up to the corrective action plan. Okay, we're moving through that. We, you know, the soil that we received from the Highway 209 project, of course, has been stored at, at the Shelton property. And the plan and the remedy that we selected is putting soil back on, you know, the cap of the landfill, and especially from the property from, on the western side that faces the Francis Farm Road, the Lewis property. All that property there, you know, has waste on it. We did a study several years ago where we defined the limits of the waste and tried to identify some of the waste that was around the facility. That's when we found out that, you know, some of that waste had been, you know, pushed out further from the boundaries than we had anticipated or had known at that time. So, so that, with that slope that we're getting ready to put all this soil on, these borings will tell us the stability of that slope, and if it can handle the weight of the amount of soil that we're, that we're going to put on there. Because this slope is going to, you know, start up there, basically, you know, above where the road is, and continue down over to the Lewis property, where we have these huge sediment ponds as well, over two to three acres in size of sediment pond for the two of those. So it's a big project, you know, we anticipate spending $5.1 million. Some of the different various things that we want to be sure of is putting the road back in, because we, we're going to, we've looked at four different road scenarios for the folks to be able to get back up to the bus garage. We looked at a road that went up along the Lewis property, came back up, the Shelton property came up the backside. The cost of that was, you know, it was going to exceed over a million dollars by the time we built that road. We looked at coming over on the Stevens side, coming through the woods over there, building that road. We looked at the road closer to the town of Waynesville side, but that had a lot of grade and steep, so it made more sense to go back and put the road where it is, even though the configuration's going to change there. We're going to eliminate part of that road as well, where the road is existing now, due to the amount of waste that is so close to the bus garage. We've got to cap that and slope that. So that road that's right there, the bus garage gets from one side of the building to the other side, that's on the landfill side, is going to be eliminated. And we're going to have to put a road on the lower side of the bus garage, where they'll come in and come around over there and come up on the other side there. So we're going to go test those slopes as well to make sure that the road bed will, you know, will not give us any issues. We're trying not to make sure there's no problems later on. We don't want to be back here in three years going, hey, this problem, that problem. We're trying to eliminate and take all the guesswork out of it is. So one of the other issues that, you know, a couple of issues that we realized there is that the bus garage is on a septic system. We're going to eliminate the septic system, and we're going to run the sewer up from where we presently have it at the flare station. We're going to run the sewer all the way up to the bus garage, because we don't want to spend $5 million and then have a septic issue and there's nowhere else to put the septic system out there. That's one of the other issues. Also, the bus garage has three large petroleum tanks there that are, have some significant age on them. We need those removed, and we respectively have asked the bus folks that they're going to, we need to close those out as part of this project and re-site the tanks there. Because we don't need any issues coming out of older tanks and how to, you know, replace those later on, because we can't dig three 10,000-gallon tanks out after we spent $5 million replacing, you know, putting a new cap on. So we've asked them to start the process of closing out those tanks, and then part of this is starting to close out the, the tanks there. And we're going to have to, you know, site a new place for them to put tanks. So I can answer several questions, and I'm sure you have some. But these borings will allow us, you know, to make sure that we have the stability, replacing the road, getting all the information that we need, you know, to be able to get everything done before we go to the final phase of the construction, or starting the construction process, which we anticipate in the spring of 2019.
Okay, questions?
You know, I was just thinking, seems like at one time, Mike, we talked about relocation of the bus garage, hadn't we, so? Would that, would, I'm just wondering, would that be a more expensive process than trying to deal with what we have now and leave it there on that campus?
The, the, depending on where, you know, the garage is sited, the cost, the ability, we have spoken to them, and they anticipate their cost for a bus garage would be close to $5 million as well. But we'd still have, we still have to do the cap. We still have to do the cap no matter what, because, you know, we have a groundwater migration issue. So, you know, moving them doesn't solve, you know, this aspect of it. It, you know, yeah, solves a sewer, you know, a septic sewer system. Yeah, it eliminates, you know, having to put, you know, the cost of redoing the road is roughly $120,000. Yeah, it eliminates, you know, those kinds of costs. But, you know, it doesn't sob anything, you know, right away, you know, by, by moving them. It's, you know, it's a difficult, you know, I'm, I'm pretty sure that we're the only folks that got a, a public building, more or less, on top of a landfill, and it has presented a lot of issues. And, you know, as this comes up, you know, you know, Chris figured out, you know, the septic, you know, issue, and, you know, brought it to everybody's attention, you know, the, the tanks, you know, there's issues that we're dealing with that you normally wouldn't deal with with a closed-out landfill.
Well, the tanks, you say the tanks can't be moved, really, they have to be filled in, is that right?
Yeah.
On location?
That's correct, yeah. Because we can't take, you can't take that, those tanks out, you know, because we've got, you know, a methane issue over here, over here with the landfill. And so you imagine opening that whole thing up as it is, and what that would do, you know, to it. So we're going to test everything, and then there's a process that we'll eliminate. We don't have to do concrete anymore. You can foam them and close them up, but we need to start, you know, down this process and get everything rolling to where we don't, we're not delaying them as well to issues, because they'll have to have a workaround during this construction time, because, you know, it'll be hard to get a tanker up there to fill anything. So they'll have to have a workaround over, you know, for that, you know, period of time the construction's underway.
So whether it's moved or not moved, it's still going to be a pretty good expense?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, and then, and even, even if they did move and go and build another one, which is a huge expense, you've still got to do all this.
Yeah.
You've still got to close these tanks, you've still got to, you know, do most of the work that you're talking about. But, and really, I mean, once you do all this, this is being proactive, because you're, you're, you're trying to eliminate potential problems in the future while you're doing this work. And, and then, once you do all this, that facility, all those problems that are potential problems that they've been out there is eliminated.
Well, we hope so.
Yeah, hopefully, well.
Yeah, we hope so, yeah.
That's what we're shooting for.
That's what we're shooting for, that's what we're shooting for, yeah. So, you know, because if, if you remember, you know, from your time on the school board and your time as superintendent, you know, we have a monitoring, an active monitoring system in that building for methane. You know, we were, we replaced it three years ago, you know, to the tune of about $10,000. You know, so, and, and we take monthly readings of, of all the methane, you know, throughout the whole facility, and, you know, and make sure, you know, we, we make sure that the folks that are working in the bus garage are safe. That's why, you know, we went ahead and made that expense and that expenditure for, you know, for them to where there's never an issue, and luckily, there's not been any issues there. But it's amazing how close the waste is to that building. I mean, there's a sign from me to you that says, "Edge of Waste," right there at the building. Yeah. So.
What is the cost of running the sewer?
It'll be part of the package to, in the construction package, Mr. Chairman, I, I couldn't answer that, but I can get that number for you. But I don't know what that, because I said, we're going to run it across the landfill and tie back into our system that we already, we already have sewer at our flare station, because, you know, we have a, we built that, you know, that racetrack around the facility to collect methane and to collect leachate out there. And it comes through down there at the bottom where the flare station is, and then goes into the town of Waynesville sewer. So we'll be able to tie in there. Imagine, you know, we might have to have a pump station to get it up and over there, but that, that will be part of the overall project.
How many feet approximately do you think it is? A long way or short, not too far?
Long way, long way, yeah. Yeah, depending on, yeah.
I mean, you're talking, I mean, even though it, it sounds like a lot of cost, it's probably not, I mean, you know, I'm assuming you said you had to go up and over, probably use a forced main system, pump system?
Something like that, yeah.
And it's not a real?
Yeah. So the overall cost for the sewer compared to the rest of the project, it ain't, no, it ain't nothing at all, nothing at all, no. Yep, so, you know, so that, this is, we're trying to eliminate any future problems. We're trying to address as many as we can. That's why, you know, we're doing all these borings to make sure that everything, you know, when we put all that large amount of soil on there, that we know the stability of the waste underneath there, the ground underneath there, we'll be able to take that weight. Because we, you know, we don't want to, you know, start putting, you know, moving soil, and then, no, it cannot take that, you know, that weight. If we have to, you know, go back and punt a new design after, you know, that, you know, there's more waste underneath there than we thought, because they're going to depths of 90 feet on this one, you know, to try to figure out, because when we, when we did the test, where about, we're trying to find the edge of the waste, you know, we're, we're only dropping in 10 to 12 feet. And that's, you know, we found waste, you know, on, on the other side of the landfill, it was way over from what we thought that we had waste on.
Can the site for the school bus garage, could it always be used for something if, if the garage was moved?
We've had several discussions about that, because it's, it's a heck of a building, you know, for, for the county, if the county had it, it's a heck of a building for maintenance and for our needs for our garage. I mean, it's a heck of a building.
It is.
It's a, we, we marvel at that building a lot when we, you know, walk through it.
Was it a metal building?
It's a metal building, yeah, it is, yeah.
So they can move it?
Well, but you've got all your, your bays, you've got concrete, you've got offices, and?
I don't know how, yeah, I don't know if that would be.
Well, I mean, as long as it's a usable space and they can use it for a garage, I mean, I think they probably should continue to do it.
What you're basically doing is you're spending, even though it's going to be, you know, substantial, it's going to be a small amount that you would do if you tried to move that thing.
Yeah.
If you tried to go out and rebuild it and redo it and bring it up, bring, you know?
We're spending five here, but if we, you know, like I said, you know, we're helping move the project along, you know, with, with the other issues, you know, because we're, you know, they don't incur a lot of cost, and it's no fault of theirs. But, you know, you're talking about spending $5 million here and then jumping over and spending $5 million somewhere else. Now, now we're sunk out 10. But that was, you know, that was early numbers, I, you know, their $5 million number, I don't, I don't know. I didn't bet that number that much.
Okay. All right, any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the drilling of 45 borings at the Francis Farm landfill, the cost of $51,400 to be paid from the transfer funds from the solid waste budget.
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. And then we have, from Julie Davis, a budget amendment regarding the $51,400.
What you have in front of you next is the budget amendment to cover the $51,400. We have a capital project fund that we have the cap, the corrective action plan budgeted in, and this is necessary in order to, to do the cap. So we are budgeting this $51,400 in the capital project fund as a transfer from the solid waste management fund that David just mentioned. We actually already have transfer amounts budgeted in that fund, so we don't have to adjust that. All we need to do is increase the revenue and expense in that capital project fund for this particular item.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions about that? I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget amendment that's presented by Julie Davis.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you, Julie. Next, we'll move back to the item number two, which is Andrew Messer, the Fire Marshal's here to request approval of fireworks display at Chestnut Ridge on July 28th, 2018. Morning, Andrew.
Morning, commissioners, how are you? Good. Our office has received a request from Chestnut Ridge for a public fireworks display on July 28th. As always, they've submitted all the paperwork to us and everything seems okay. Just need your approval to move forward with it.
Okay, commissioners, any questions? Everything's still working smoothly out there?
Yes, sir, it seems to.
That's great. I will entertain a motion to approve the fireworks display at Chestnut Ridge on July 28th, 2018, as presented by Fire Marshal Messer.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we got discussion of the recommendation by the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board to consider the county taking over management responsibilities of the IP Sports Complex currently leased by the Town of Canton. If Claire Carlton, our Recreation and Parks Director, Claire?
Good morning. At our June 5th Recreation Advisory Board meeting, we were briefed by Zeb Smathers, who's one of our board members, about the possibility of the transfer of the management of this. So we discussed it for a while and then decided to bring it before the commissioners to see if it would be in the best interest of the county to assume the management responsibilities.
Okay, commissioners, and this is something that, that I think Mayor Smathers brought to the board, Mayor Smathers is on the Recreation Advisory Committee, and had brought this particular request to the board for discussion. Brandon is on the Recreation Advisory Board, and obviously, Brandon could not be with us today, and neither could Mayor Smathers. I could have taken this item off, but I thought I'd just bring it forward for a quick discussion as to whether or not we want to try to enter into some discussion with them and also continue the investigation as to whether this would be a good thing for the county.
I, I need more information, so obviously, we need to further the discussion. And then, you know, I've had a couple of calls on it, some concerns. I think there's a little bit of miscommunication out there in, you know, about... a little bit of miscommunication out there and, uh, you know, about what, what the plans are or whatever, so, uh, uh, you know, I, I think it behooves us to look at it anyway, and I'm assuming your, your board has, uh, requested or that we move or look at it.
That's correct, and I, um, our Board Chairman, Kevin Fitzgerald, is, is with us today too, if y'all would like to ask him any questions.
Well, I, and I think basically, what, what they wanted today, and then, correct me if I'm wrong, is just to see if the, if the board's interested in continuing discussions with the Town of Canton and gathering that evidence, not necessarily, if, if we don't want them to do it at all, I believe they just need to stop, but they just want to make sure that we're at least, um, not interested in it if it's, if it's something beneficial to the county.
Yeah, I mean, you know, until we get information, we don't know which direction we would go anyway, so, you know, and I, 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 I mean, it's a good facility, it's used, it's, you know, I think there's been a, an effort or a desire to expand the, the county recreation a little bit, and so, you know, I, I said, I don't know, have any idea what money we're looking at or what it entails, and so it'd be interesting to know all that, and then we can make a, an educated, uh...
Yeah, I, I think what's important to me is that if, if, you know, one, the, the Town of Canton does, does not, no longer wants to manage that or lease that, so there, there's obviously a reason for that, and I told Mayor Smathers that as well. Um, uh, and then also, if, if the county was to take it over, you know, what, we needed a significant plan as to what we're going to do with that property, and, and so we can use it for the best interests of, of Haywood County. We certainly don't want to take over a particular complex and then not have a plan for its use, because we need to have use. Uh, as far as recreation goes, we all know that recreation is not a moneymaker, uh, it's something that certainly costs, it's a quality of life issue, uh, for the county and can be a good quality of life addition for the county if it's utilized appropriately. Um, so, I think as, as far as the board goes, that's what we want to see. If, if we're going to take it over, I mean, we, we probably know why they want to get rid of it, they want to get rid of it because it's, it's cost prohibitive to them at this particular time. Heck, they just opened a brand-new multi-million dollar pool, so, um, the, and, and we don't mind looking at that, but we want to make sure that, that we know the cost, the exact cost, and what we're going to do with that, and, and that we do have a good plan for the county. Kevin, did you want to speak? And y'all, if I'm, if I'm wrong or stepping out of bounds, you just let me know.
No, I think you're exactly right.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, and good morning. Uh, just to be clear, um, the request that we made to you all was based on, um, one of our board members who happens to be the Mayor of Canton, asking us to consider this. And if you take a look at what was sent to you all in regards to this request, um, we have a lot of caveats in that, in terms of what the real costs are, um, and what the priorities are for the county when it comes to recreation. And we're making it very clear in this request or this memorandum that if we had to prioritize between, um, getting a part of that facility in Clyde as an actual recreation center and facility for, for the residents of this county, or taking on additional ball fields, it's pretty clear that having a, having a home base and a face, uh, for Haywood County Recreation that actually, uh, would serve the, the population that continues to come here better, it would be a recreation center with an indoor facility with the chance to do things outside as opposed to just adding a few more ball fields to the inventory. So knowing that money is, is, doesn't grow on trees, um, and that priorities have to be made, uh, if we were going to spend money, we would spend it on a facility versus that, that has, uh, the opportunity to go indoors as well as outdoors versus additional ball fields. Um, so in deference to our fellow board member, um, we decided to, to bring the request forward. But, uh, like you, we have a lot of questions about what the real costs are, um, in terms of end, what the actual need is. Uh, I, I learned a long time ago that people don't generally give you something that has value for nothing. If there's real value to it, they kind of want to hang on to it, so, thank you for your time.
Um, Claire and Kevin, as far as our current Haywood County Recreation Program, I would say by, by your request there, that the, the armory and having a facility or center like that would meet the needs that you have now at operating as a department as opposed to, uh, ball fields.
Correct.
Correct.
I mean, and I'm saying the services that you provide now.
Correct. You know, it, as, uh, as I saw last week on the, on the front page of the USA Today, pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in America, and it's hugely popular here, and having another indoor facility to accommodate that growth, and particularly for people who are getting older, um, they love it, keeps them active, safe, you know, get hurt, uh, you know, those kinds of things. So having a facility such as the Armory to, to continue to grow that activity versus another ball field that apparently isn't getting enough use to sustain it, doesn't seem like a difficult decision.
And pickleball, for people who don't know, that's like, uh, a cross between tennis and badminton.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Anything, okay, anything else? Commissioners, any other questions?
You know, just a comment, uh, I'd like to see us take a good look at the facility we always need in ball fields. I hear, I've heard that since nineteen seventy-one when I came into the county, so we need to take a real close look. We can't really duplicate this facility, and when I ride by on Interstate Forty, I don't see it used very much. And the key is going to be scheduling. You know, right now, it's, it's a Canton facility. We will have to be real careful we don't get into an east-west where we scheduling one location more than the other. That, that's what it'll come down to, we'll have to demonstrate it's truly a county facility.
Correct.
Yes.
And I've fought those battles many, many years, so, I, I think that's the key, cost, scheduling.
Well, and, and, you know, I think we, in getting this information, you know, we need to see exactly who's using that field, or what they're using it for, because I think there's a lot of tournament ball goes on down there maybe, and, you know, how that's works and, you know, are they paying their way, or, you know, I know some people make quite a bit of money on that, and, um, so I, I think there's a lot of information that we really need, and, and, you know, rather than just saying no, I mean, I, I, we really need information before we can make a good decision.
Couple of things I just thought of, and that is, I've been on this board now for over two years, uh, we've not had a single occasion where, uh, Claire has come to us and said, in her monthly report, we have a shortage of ball fields, we need more ball fields. I mean, that's, that's a reality, so, so there are fields that are available, and it's not like there are leagues that are not occurring because they don't have a place to play. The second thing is, it bears taking a hard look at whether or not that facility might be better served being operated by a private entity. Um, you know, whether the Canton Little League would want to take it over, because they, the primary user of that facility, and they would maintain it and they would manage it and they would run it for their purposes, and then they could make money off of other traveling teams that might want to play there, I, I don't know, but a lot of questions that just need to be answered before the decision is made, yes, we want to take it as part of the county inventory, or no, we don't, so...
Well, and, and, you know, another, I mean, thought, I mean, potential, I mean, even after we get all this information, but, you know, would Canton be interested in a joint partnership? I mean, you know, where they, you know, they assume some of the responsibility as well as, so, I think there's a lot of stuff out there that we really need to get a hold of, and, and then we can kind of go for it.
Good point, thank you.
I, I would like to see the county do more in recreation. I know Joel comes from an area where they do, he was surprised at how little the county does in recreation, and I think we need to be doing more. We've let the county, the county, the towns do, uh, recreation, uh, probably for, for too long, and we've not really contributed to that, and I think, you know, I think people that move here are expecting us to be doing more for recreation than we, than we currently do. Also, at that facility, I'd done some work on it early, early on, and, um, on the lower part of the property, I don't think it's been developed, but there was room for a possible soccer field at one time. So there, there is, there's expansion possibilities there if it's needed. Um, but I would like to see the county, personally, I would like to see the county doing more for recreation and not less, because I think, uh, it's just, uh, it's a quality of life issue, it's like Kevin was saying about older people wanting to stay more active, and on the, on the east side, on, on this side, we do have soccer fields in Allen's Creek, and we really don't do anything on, on the east side. I mean, on the west side, we have the soccer fields, on the east side, we really don't have anything. So I, I think in a partnership like Michael was talking about is a good idea, a partnership with Canton, instead of having them drag all the weight all the time, why, why, why don't the county step up a little bit, you know, and, and maybe we do need to look at, uh, at a, at a schedule, uh, what, what the needs are and what the use is. We did our recreation plan in two thousand six, I remember, I believe that was when it was, Claire, and, uh, that's been a long time ago, but I, I do remember, um, you know, we, we, I don't think we've done any, anything much in, that was in that plan, because, uh, that was about the time the recession hit, unfortunately, and we weren't able to do, and grants dried up, you know, things like that, that's why Jonathan Creek never got developed. But, uh, I think there was some good ideas with that, and there can be good ideas now with the Canton property, uh, it's, it's there, it's, it's in use, and they do have travel ball tournaments there, and it, to me, it's a, it's a little bit of an economic, and not economic development too. We have a industrial site and maybe even some more there at Beaver Dam, and I think it shows, you know, there's, you know, you have this facility right there also, so I think it could be, you know, all worked in with what the county's trying to do, so. I would like, and I've talked with Brandon about it too, by the way, and he's pretty well echoed what y'all said about the, the needs. He, he'd like this, for us to take, you know, a closer look at it, he is on that, on that board, and, and maybe, uh, try to do more if we can, so, that, that would be my thoughts on it too.
Okay, that provides some direction?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Further information?
Uh, next, we have a request approval of two annual contracts with Southern Software Incorporated for software support for the following systems used by the Sheriff's Office, and, uh, Chief Deputy Hanes is here, and I'll let him explain the following systems and what your request is.
Good morning, Commissioners. What I bring before you today is a, uh, our contract renewals for fiscal year nineteen for, for two different pieces. The last Commissioners' meeting, we had approved, uh, quite a few contracts, operational contracts, and we had two leftovers. Uh, the first is for Southern Software, both of them are for Southern Software, the first is for the record management system for the operation Sheriff's Office side of it, which manages our incident reports, civil process, um, arrest reports, any kind of operational reporting system that we use outside of the detention facility, uh, that's what this contract covers. So we're requesting that the renewal of this annual support contract for the RMS system currently in use, uh, at the price of seven thousand three hundred seventeen dollars.
Commissioners, any questions?
The response time impressed me, five hours?
On, on, sir?
On the, on the software.
Oh, absolutely, yes, sir. They're very responsive, Southern, Southern supports us in, in a lot of different ways, in our nine-one-one system, in our CAD system, in our, uh, GIS mapping system, so they're a, they're a full-service organization and, and, uh, based here in North Carolina, so, uh, us and, and all the other four municipalities utilize their services as well.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the, uh, contract with records management system with the Sheriff's Department, the amount of seven thousand three hundred seventeen dollars.
So move.
Second. Second by Kevin, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Next, we got the jail management system, Jeff.
Uh, yes, and once again, I bring before you, this is the jail management system, same exact, uh, philosophy behind the RMS system, it just manages our jail, uh, issues as far as inmates, intakes, medical issues, uh, transportation, and it's our record management system for the jail, and it says this is to renew our annual support contract for the JMS system currently in use at the detention center of the Office of the Sheriff, at a price tag of three thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars annually.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion, uh, wait, wait, anybody have any questions? Sorry. All right. If no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the jail management system contract for the detention center with the Sheriff's Department, with JMS.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Uh, next, we got request approval for the purchase of a two thousand nineteen F-two-fifty truck for emergency services in the amount of thirty-one thousand four eighty-one seventy-two to be paid from two thousand eighteen, nineteen budgeted funds. Travis Donaldson, our Deputy Director for Emergency Services is here with us this evening, or this morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Um, I seeked out quotes from both Ken Wilson's and Taylor Ford, uh, for this vehicle. It is, uh, not a new addition, it will be a replacement of a, uh, of a aging truck. Uh, there was about a hundred and fifty dollars difference between the two quotes, uh, it should be attachment twelve for y'all.
Okay, so basically, this replaces an, uh, an F-one-fifty-two-thousand-five, uh, truck that you, that's no longer, at least reliable?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions?
I don't think I've ever seen anything this close in the, in the bidding process. You say a hundred and fifty?
Yeah, there was like, there was like a hundred and fifty dollars between the two.
Wow.
And they're, they're working off state contract prices, so it's whatever, whatever money they want to put into it to, to make a little bit on it.
Well, no, I know I can't buy an F-two-fifty for thirty-one thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars.
We'd be there today.
Yeah.
Right now.
Okay, any other questions of Travis? If not, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the purchase of the F, uh, the two thousand nineteen F-two-fifty truck for emergency services replacing the two thousand five. And, and the purchase price is thirty-one thousand four eighty-one seventy-two. Who, who won that? I'm sorry, who got the bid?
That would've been Taylor.
Taylor.
Taylor, uh, Taylor Ford. Glad it was Taylor and Ken Wilson both bidding for it as well. Okay, I know I've probably screwed that up a little bit, but is that enough of a motion for somebody to...
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Thank you, Travis. Uh, uh, let me ask you this, what are we going to do with the two thousand five? You gonna...
Uh, it's, we're probably going to do a departmental transfer. We've been talking with the Sheriff's Office, and they may have a, a use for that truck.
Okay.
How many miles?
It's got over, over two hundred thousand miles on it. If you, if you leave it, leave it Park Island for a while, it'll take mosquitoes out for a couple of hours.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much, Travis. That passed, right? Did we vote on it?
Yeah.
We voted on it. Oh, you got the next one?
I've got the next one.
I'm sorry, I thought, well, you want to start? All right, the next was request approval of the following two contract renewals with Zoal Medical Corporation for the Emergency Services Department to pay from the two thousand eighteen, nineteen funds.
Uh, what you have here before you is, uh, is a, is a maintenance contract along with a, a PM service, uh, for a two-year period for cardiac monitors. Um, the replacement cost of each of those monitors is around thirty-seven thousand dollars. Um, this also gets us a substantial discount on the proprietary equipment for those old cardiac monitors. Um, that's the first part of that, and then the second part is a two-year monitor, battery charger, extended warranty, uh, it's a two-year warranty for the two thousand two hundred ninety-five dollars, it's attachment fourteen. Uh, the cost for the two-year cardiac monitor extended warranty was twenty-two thousand one hundred and ten dollars. This is something that we've been doing over the past few, few years, uh, the normal warranty for those devices has run out, and this is an extension of that warranty for a two-year period.
Okay. Commissioners, have any questions about the, uh, I suppose these are two separate items, the battery on my iPad went dead, so...
Uh, they're two separate contracts, yes.
Uh, so you have, have any questions about either one of these?
No, let's keep that running.
Yeah.
And the batteries charge, please.
You want, you want the cardiac monitor to be available?
It'd be available. Does that go directly, they transmit directly to the hospital? Does that go directly, they transmit directly to the hospital?
Yes, if we take a 12 lead, if you're having a cardiac event, say you're having a, a heart attack, we have the capabilities to transmit what we're seeing to both Haywood Regional and to Mission Hospital if you were having an event where we were taking one of those. So you, we can get those in front of a cardiologist as soon as we pretty much take it in the field.
All right. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the two-year cardiac monitor extended warranty and printed maintenance contract with Zoll Medical.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. And then I'll entertain a motion to approve the two-year monitoring, monitor, is that right? Monitoring battery charges extended warranty with Zoll Medical for $2,295.
Looks like a typo there.
Okay. And those are ba, the battery charges just to keep them charged up? Separate contract? Okay.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you, Travis.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, next is request approval of contract renewal with Kronos Incorporated for annual timekeeping software and support maintenance in the amount of $25,451.45. Lori Tomlin, our technology and communications director is here. Hey, Lori.
Good morning, sir. How are you?
Fine, how are you?
Why, thank you. I am here to request the renewal of our Kronos timekeeping software support contract. It is $25,451.45, and it is in my current fiscal year budget.
Okay. Commissioners, have any questions about that? This is the timekeeping software that all the county employees utilize, is that right?
Yes, sir.
All right, if no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract with Kronos for $25,451.45 to be paid out of the 2018-19 budgeted funds for technology, for IT, I guess.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, and that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
All this we're doing is a yearly contract, and it comes up, so it seems like a whole lot. But if you don't have it, then something goes down, you're in real trouble.
That's right. Next is our esteemed register of deeds, Sherry Rogers is here with us today, passing out booklets.
Sherry, send the people pay this, wearing these out. You got people in here just wearing those out, aren't you?
Okay, so this is to request approval to, to proceed with securing a contract with CoFile Technologies to preserve 10 volumes of birth books in the amount of $28,255 to be paid from your budgeted funds. Is that right?
Yes.
All right, Sherry, go ahead, tell us about these books.
Well, it's an ongoing project that we've been working on in our county for several years. And the records have to be kept permanently. These birth records have to be kept permanently according to our retention schedule through the, through the North Carolina Department of Cultural Resources. And we have birth and death books back to 1913. And we also have real estate deed books and things back to 1808. So actually, you know, it's a project, it's going to take years and years and years. And it, as you can see, it is an expensive project, but it is something that's very important for our historical records here in the county. And I actually looked for Joel Mashburn's birth certificate. I was going to bring it to show you, you know, I was hoping it was one of the ones in bad shape. But his was actually in really good shape. But these, these, after this project is complete, the CoFile, they do a wonderful job with, with the books. They deacidify the paper because the acid on the paper, you know, you'll see the edges. I marked with little tabs, some pages that the edges are really bad. They fixed the edges of the births with linen paper. And they take that, all the acid off the pages, and they, they re, they rebine them. They look really good. And like I said, these books need to be here years and years after we're long gone. And I think the way they're doing this project that these books will be. And like I said, it's a, it's an ongoing project. It'll take years and years and years to get the office complete. But as well as keeping the office up in the technology department, it's part of my job, a very important part of my job, to keep the historical records in good shape. So I, I am real proud of the project. When we, the first books, we did our, ran them to Julie's office and showed the county manager. They looked really good, so.
I've got a question.
Okay.
If you're looking in this for 1925.
Mm-hmm.
How do you find them? You just got to look at each pa, every page?
We have an index. We have an index that tells you what page to go, so what volume and page to go in. And these bu, these books are all scanned and indexed in the computer as well. But we still, on, for the older ones, we do still have the large index books. But, but they're indexed, and it's easy to find.
So what we have here is the birth order.
Yes, well, actually, I think the older ones, they may even be in townships, like Beaver Dam township. You know, some of the older ones, they have birth order and townships. But the books, the way we do it today is we, we get them electronically from Raleigh, and it is birth order, you know, and they're indexed in the computer and easy to find. These are all very easy to find.
What is maybe the oldest that you have?
Well, our, the state of North Carolina required the counties to start keeping records of birth and deaths in 1913. So that's when Haywood County started keeping births and deaths, not before. But we do have some what's called delayed birth certificates, and I'm working on them too. And they, a lot of those look really bad. But the, we do have some delayed births back in the 1800s. And what that is, is if you didn't get on record, you could come in with sufficient proofs, and we could create you a birth certificate. So, but our land records are back to 1808. And some of those books, I haven't, I've been concentrating on the births. The older ones are already done, and they looked horrible. But the real estate books will need to be done too, at some point. I mean, like I said, it'll take years, but it needs to be done. They're very important records, and I, I hope to continue doing it. Each year, do some, I, you know, get a little money each year. And this is the most I've ever been given, this amount this year, and I was proud to get that, the whole quote, so.
I just, I found my father-in-law on one of those.
He did?
Yeah, and stuff, so he was born in 1923. And, you know, when, when we were in, when Brennan and I were in Washington DC, you don't, you don't touch anything, you know, those old books and papers up there. You just don't even touch them. But you can tell that, you know, they put them in the plastic. Because if you're going to look at pages, I have to lick my fingers, you know, to do that, because I don't have a lot of oil. But anyway, so that's just wear and tear on, when people are looking through there, you know. And so over time, you can tell that, you know, that, you know, they deteriorate. If you put them in the plastic, then doesn't matter, you know? You're not going to wear that out.
And there's certain plastics that you can't use. That's like a vellum or something, I'm not sure exactly. But they use some, you know, they use what you have to use for, for archiving. So, so, yeah, they, they do a really good job.
All right. Any other questions? So this is what will be, and that is what was.
Yeah.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve a contract with CoFile Technologies to preserve 10 volumes of birth books as presented by Sherry Rogers, our register of deeds, in the amount of $28,255, which is being paid from budgeted funds.
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Thank you, Sherry.
Thank you, Sherry.
No, it's good. We like to see that. All right, next is request approval to waive facility usage fee on behalf of the Towne-Wayzle Planning Board for the purpose of conducting a public hearing on July 30th, 2018 at 5:30 to be held here in this courtroom at the Haywood County Courthouse. Chris Boyd, our development and facility services director is with us. Chris?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
The Towne-Wayzle Planning Board's requested to use this facility. I think they're going to hold a public hearing about the apartment complex on Plot Creek, maybe a follow-up. So they were looking for a larger capacity. In addition, they've requested the use of the electronics, not to video, but at least the microphones and the podium microphone. So there's a fee associated with that. Per ordinance, the board is the only ones that can waive that fee. We request that to be waived.
Okay. Commissioners, have any questions about that? Or if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the waiver of the facility usage fee on behalf of the Towne-Wayzle for the use of the, this Haywood County Historic Courthouse courtroom for a public hearing on July 30th, 2018 at 5:30.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Next, we got from Chris, request approval of the following contracts for solid waste. And Chris, I'll just let you go through the contracts.
Thank you. We have three different contracts. The first is a contract with McGill and Associates. That is a general services contract. It can be used for convenience centers, for particular things at Francis Farm. That is not covered under the corrective action plan or the ACM engineering services. Can be used at White Oak if needed. So it's a, really a renewal of a, a contract that we have with those folks every year. The second and the, the third contracts are directly related. They're with Francis Farm groundwater testing. The state requires the online closed landfill to be tested by a third party, then analyzed by a separate party. So Shealy has been doing the testing there for a number of years. Beale is doing the analysis of the groundwater testing. That testing acquires two times per year.
Okay. Commissioners, have any questions about those contracts? You know, some of these contracts, and we continue to talk about, you know, Francis Farm. And, and you know, we always make sure that we cut costs here, try to do the best we can to, to spend as little money as we can on things. But you know, and, and, and the commissioners at that time certainly followed protocol. It was not necessary to line a landfill. But you can see, and I, I don't even know if it was common to line a landfill, but boy, you can sure see the expense now that it costs by not lining that landfill. And, and, and actually, it's no one's, no one's fault at all. It just is what it is.
How about we said if we just shifted out of here, we'd have been better off?
Yeah. All right. First, the contract for general services for solid waste operations, the amount of $25,000 with McGill. I'll entertain a motion to approve such.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the Shealy Environmental Services Incorporated contract in the amount of $9,385 for sampling, the annual, annual water sampling at Francis Farm. Entertained a motion to approve that contract.
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And then the contract with Bunel Lammings Engineering for statistical, statistical analysis of groundwater at Francis Farm landfill for $5,400. Motion for that.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chris. Next, let's see, who's going to present this? Because Sue Fowler, Sue Fowler's not here, right? Okay. We've got request approval of the agreement between Haywood County and the 30th prosecutorial district attorney, Ashley Welch, to be covered with granting, with grant funding from the North Carolina Administrative Office of the Courts to cover the services for the disposition of cases of domestic violence. It's attachment 25.
And I'm presenting for Sue Fowler, the, I don't know a whole lot of details about the program, but the grant funds do run through the finance office. And she has sent the information related to this contract. The contract is directly related to a grant. This is a three-year grant award in the amount of $450,000 from the US Department of Justice, Office on Violence Against Women, that has been granted to Haywood County. And this is a direct federal grant that requires no match on the county's part. This grant will allow specialized prosecutor and a DA legal assistant for domestic violence, sexual assault, stalking, and dating violence cases. And the program operates through the office of the district attorney. The grant was first awarded in 2008, and continuation funding has been received over the last 10 years to assist victims. The new grant award will be in place till 2020. And this has apparently been a very successful program that allows for the prosecution of those offenders of violence against women.
What, what's the amount of the grant?
The total grant is $450,000 for this round.
Okay. And I think that they have a prosecutor, a prosecutor that's specifically paid to prosecute domestic violence cases, as well as an assistant, as well as, there may be an investigator as well that they have.
Yes, there's investigator. The, you'll notice that the total for this contract is about $290,000. And the, the rest of that grant goes to things like equipment, some digital cameras, and then to pay reach when those services are needed.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, have any questions about this agreement? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement to accept the grant to fund the, the 30th prosecutorial district attorney and from the administrative office of the courts in the amount of whatever it was, to serve the disposition of cases of domestic violence.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Julie. Next, we got the budget amendment for the 446, 692. Well, there was a number right there. And I suppose that's a budget amendment, accepting the funds and applying it to, or giving it to the?
To, to the grant, it certainly is. You will probably remember that we actually received this grant in the last fiscal year. And the grant in the budget was approved. But at the, at the year end, what we have to do is move it into the next fiscal year. So we take the balance of that $450,000, and there was $446,692 left because we just started spending that money in June. So that amount is being spread over the professional services and the supplies that are necessary for the program. And then we're showing that revenue, and it's federal revenue coming through the state and the county.
All right. Entertain a motion to approve that budget amendment.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you, Julie. Next, we've got Kathy Vossler, our new library director, is here with us this evening, or this, that morning, to request approval of appointments of Andrew Sanderbeck and Shelley Coker to the Library Board of Trustees.
Good morning. I'm requesting approval of two appointments to the Library Board of Trustees. The first is to fulfill, fulfill the remaining one year of a six-year term. The second is to fulfill a full six-year term. From a pool of six applicants who were vetted, interviewed on June 20th, and voted upon by the board, the following two have been selected. For the one-year term, the board has selected Andrew Sanderbeck, a local business owner who has lived in Haywood County for the past nine years. He works as a consultant and trainer for libraries and other organizations, and he serves on several library-focused leadership and learning roundtables. He believes that the library is the gem of the community, a hub where people can come together. Andrew believes in building strong relationships and partnerships between the library and the community, and that all endeavors should tie back to the library's mission. Andrew is a page turner preferring the printed word while his wife prefers ebooks. Shelley Coker has been a resident of Haywood County for over 50 years, and she lives in Maggie Valley. As an employee of the Town of Maggie, Shelley uses the Maggie Library and sees firsthand the value of library services in her community. Shelley attended Leadership Haywood 2016, volunteers for the national parks, and is a board member for her church. She stays up to date with current literature, enjoys reading on her Kindle, participates in summer reading, and enjoys historical research. Shelley looks forward to giving back and has used Haywood County libraries, library services her entire life. With your approval, Andrew Sanderbeck and Shelley Coker will immediately be, begin serving on the Library Board of Trustees.
Okay, Commissioners, have any questions to Kathy? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve Andrew Sanderbeck to the one-year term and Shelley Coker to a six-year term to the Library Board of Trustees as requested by Kathy Vossler and approved by, and I'm guessing.
So move.
Okay, well, I don't have to finish that.
Nope.
That's good.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Sounds like we've been here a long time.
We have. And the Library Board of Trustees approved and recommended these.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Kathy. All right, next, we've got request reappointments of Brian Grimm and Dr. Randolph Williams to the Nursing Home Committee. to the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee for Long-Term Care. Joel Mashburn.
Mr. Chairman, this recommendation comes from Larry Reeves with the Southwestern Regional Planning Commission. He is the Ombudsman for this program. And it is their recommendation to reappoint Dr. Randolph Williams and Brian Graham to the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee. Both of these have been designated as advisory committee or meet the requirements by the state long-term care program, and so it is recommended that you appoint these two to that nursing home advisory committee.
Okay, any questions? Entertain a motion to reappoint Brian Graham and Randolph, Dr. Randolph Williams to the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee for Long-Term Care.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Joel, you have the next one as well.
We have a letter from the Town of Clyde recommending, and it states that on June the 14th meeting of the Clyde Board, they recommended reappointment of Betty Fagan to the Town of Clyde Board of Zoning Adjustments.
Okay, any questions? Now, I'll entertain a motion to approve, to appoint, to reappoint Betty Fagan to the Town of Clyde Board of Zoning Adjustment.
Should I move?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Betty Fagan is back on that board. And next item is also yours, Mr. Mashburn.
This year, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference will be held in Hickory on August the 23rd through the 25th. I would encourage all or as many of the Commissioners as possible to go to that annual conference, but at least one should go as the delegate from the county, because there will be actions that will be taken that a delegate will need, a delegate would need to be present to be able to represent the county. So again, I recommend that as many as you, as possible, go to it, but requesting that you appoint at least one as the delegate from Haywood County to this conference.
I believe Bill's been the delegate before, but?
I mean, I'm fine with Bill, if you'd like to continue. I, this particular few days right here, the company that I purchase my hardware always has their big annual hardware show, and for the last few years, I've gone to that, and am scheduled to be there again this year. So I wouldn't be able to go, but you've been several times, and I'm assuming you would like to continue that this year?
My last trip.
That's right. And then if I?
If I go next year, I can't vote.
If things, if I have fortune enough to be able to continue on this board, then I will make sure that next year I don't go to this hardware show and would be available to go, because it's something I would be interested in.
Yeah, Kevin said he wouldn't pay for my trip next year, so.
Okay. All right, then I'll entertain a motion to appoint Bill Upton as our voting delegate to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference, August 23rd through 25th.
Should I move? Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. And next, we've got request approval to opt into the class action lawsuit of Kane County versus the United States regarding payments in lieu of taxes, and we've got Chip Keyan, our county attorney.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, recently Julie and I received a notice from the United States Federal Court of Claims in Washington DC that the county is entitled to opt into an existing class action lawsuit, which appears, which is pending in that court, having to do with PILT, what we call PILT, payments in lieu of taxes. Because of Haywood County's large amounts of federal lands, and I'm speaking of both Forest Service lands, national forest lands, national park system lands, because of those large number of lands, the county does provide various services for these federal lands that they are compensated for or reimbursed for under the payments in lieu of taxes system. It came to the attention of certain parts of the country, I guess down in Utah, that the counties and local governments were being underpaid, were not receiving the amount of money to which they were entitled. So this lawsuit was filed, and the county has the opportunity to opt into that lawsuit, and Julie and I feel the county would gain some additional funds from this ultimate resolution of this lawsuit. We receive a significant amount of funds now, and we weren't aware that we were being shorted, but apparently they have decided that we have been shorted, and so by participating in this, we would be entitled to gain some additional funds. There's no particular work that has to be done on our part, except just to opt in and monitor what goes on in that case.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions of Chip? You know, this is something that we have discussed, that some of our budget amendments regarding the PILT funds and the applicability of those to the county, as well as to the fire departments and the emergency services crews that report and provide emergency services for Forest Service areas, so I certainly think it's something that we should join in and be a part of to try to get additional funds for that, since, what's the percentage in Haywood County?
Federal land?
Federal lands?
Oh, it's almost 40.
Yeah, four, almost 40 percent.
Almost 40.
I'll entertain a motion that we opt in or give Chip the authority to make whatever communications and provide whatever documentation we need to do, to opt into the class action lawsuit of Kane County, Utah versus the United States.
Should I move?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. All right, thank you, Chip. Next is a contract amendment with the county attorney, Chip Keyan, and we have Joel Mashburn presenting that.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the proposed amendment to Mr. Keyan's employment agreement will provide a reduced schedule, yet it ensures that he will be available to meet the current requirements of the position. He will have some flexibility in scheduling his hours, but will present his proposed schedule to the manager on a monthly basis. If future demands necessitates a return to a full-time schedule, then the employment agreement will be reconsidered in accordance with the terms of this amendment. And with that, I recommend your approval.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions? All right, and, see, Chip, you've already signed this amendment, you have any, anything you need to add?
No, I don't think so. I believe that everybody's special in the year, this was something more desired than we do, and I think we can do this, and I can still fulfill the responsibilities of my job, and I do have some great time in the South Side. For that reason, I don't really strenuously resist it, because I think there was some excess time there, and I think I can still get some work done, however, things change when you have a court experience.
Okay. Thank you, Chip. If there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion to amend the county attorney employment agreement as presented by Mr. Mashburn and is attached as Exhibit 32.
Should I move?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Okay, is there anything else that we have today? We've helped Brandon out a lot today, we've approved a lot of contracts.
We'll let him make all the motions in seconds next.
Yeah, no kidding, no kidding. All right, anything? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
Should I move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously, and we are adjourned. Thank you.